Hi, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Plymouth School Committee Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank our candidate for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate lasting, at the most, 45 minutes. Responses will not be timed, and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to five questions, but that will depend on the length of time of the responses, along with any follow-up discussion during this exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered or things they would like to add clarification to at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. Let's get started. Today, we're speaking with Michelle Badger, one of the four candidates running for two full-term seats for the Plymouth School Committee in the Plymouth Town election. Michelle, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you for having me today.
Alrighty, we're going to dive right into the questions. We're going to start with question number one. The school committee has four primary responsibilities as outlined on the Plymouth Public Schools website. One of them is to advocate for the school system with citizens and town government. What data can you draw from to make your case for the strength and outcomes of the K-12 system?
That's a great question. I mean, I think there's a variety of data. I mean, you know, there's quantitative and qualitative, and I think we can look deep into that and say, you know, we can look at our MCAS scores, we can look at our STAR Math scores, we can look at all the different scores that our students have, but we can also look at all the wonderful accomplishments that our students have done. I mean, just this last week, I feel like there's been, like, we've got DECA, we have all of these.
What's DECA for anyone who doesn't know?
Oh my God, you're going to ask me the... It's associated with our marketing and our vocational education students. And so, they are able to, they go out and they basically really use their skills that they learn in the classroom, and they are, have an opportunity to share what they've learned. They pick a subject, or a charity, or some kind of event that they do, and then they're able, then they go to the competitions, there's written, and there's presentations, and it's really incredible. And we've got our student South Panther News, all these things, and all the wonderful, then we have our theater arts programs and all the wonderful things they do. So I think success is, it depends on how you measure success. It depends on what you, you know, we want to create well-rounded individuals when they leave, whether, and have students doing and following their passion, whether that is going to school, if that's going into VOTEC, going into the military, what is that for that student? Just to be a good citizen, that they have what it takes to kind of give back to their community and live their dreams. So I think success is a variety of measures.
Okay, so how does Plymouth stack up according to other communities of equal size? In terms of test scores and graduation rates and all that? What is our grade, or do we have a grade on that?
I mean, you can look at all different things, again. I think, I know it's hard to, it's really hard to give you like, we're an A-plus district, we're a B district, where do we fall?
Are we in a top percentage?
I think we are in, we are a good district, and we are going, we are good, and we are working to be great. We, you know, when you look at MCAS scores, depending on the level, we are either a little bit above the state, or like, right on the state. There's very, we don't, you know, fall below. I mean, some of our schools individually have things that they need to work on, but that is something that our coordinators and, you know, superintendent's staff kind of works on and make sure that we, you know, continue to move our students forward, that they're getting what they need, you know, because we have all kinds of students. Because you can look at our students who are in our accelerated or are not accelerated in college-level classes, or AP classes, and then you can look at our students who are, you know, they're doing wonderful things over in the VOTEC, or our EL students. So success is...
What is the EL?
English Language Learners.
Okay.
It used to be English Second Language, but I think when you say to yourself, "English Second Language," it's not necessarily always the case. And so, that's why it's formed, transformed into EL students. So that population has gone up considerably, and I mean, we're doing really well by them, but can, we can always do better.
Okay. Alrighty. Question number two. There are four candidates running for two, three-year terms.
Yes.
Each brings a different set of experiences and history. Given that one of the responsibilities of the school committee is to develop school system policies.
Yes.
How do you balance your own views and biases to serve the greater good of the entire K-12 system?
Yeah, I mean, we all have our own biases, don't we? We all come from someplace, we all have a way of thinking, but I really think that we, as the seven members who are on there right now, do a really great job of listening to the public. I mean, we need to know what people are looking, what people are thinking. We need to think what, we have to think, balance what people are thinking with also what the administration can do, what our budget has, the abilities. So there are so many things to balance as you're making that decision. And so, I mean, I'm always constantly doing research. If I, I mean, if I have a question, I go to the source. You know, we had, I had a question about our English Language Arts Program that we use in our elementary schools, and so I went and I talked to Dr. White about, "Okay, tell me more about this program." And then, from there, we, she invited me in, and I went into one of the buildings and spent a couple hours in the morning just walking through and seeing in action. And then I had a conversation with teachers who had a problem with the curriculum itself. And, you know, I think this, this, just this example itself is something that I don't think the conversation is finished yet, because you can pull, as I said earlier, data can go all different ways. You can make data do what you want data to do. And so, it's a long conversation to have, and I think there's never a decision, I want to, there's so many decisions that I stand by, but I don't think that there's ever one that, there's ever, nothing that wouldn't move you. You know what I mean? Like, you, you learn something new, and you're like, right now, the English Language Arts Program that we're using is doing really well by our students, but maybe in a year when we look at the data, maybe it's not. And so, there, or in policy in general. So, you know, if you, when I first joined the committee, we had cupcake, what was referred to, I think, by the Old College Memorial as Cupcake Wars, and it was about food in the classroom. And so, we had teachers, and we had students, and we had family members who came, you know, who had a concern about certain food in the classroom because of allergies, and just a variety of things. You don't know where the food is coming from. Like, when you make something at home, you know your house is clean, I know my house is clean, but you don't know that everybody's house is clean. And so, it was a big, long conversation, and I think it probably went on for a couple months, but, you know, the ultimate decision was, we decide on, here's, we can still have food in the classroom, but here's a list of packaged food that we can have that is safe for students, and we make sure that our students are, our students with peanut allergies, or any other allergies, people like me who have celiac disease, like, they have an option and a way to, you know, be able to be involved.
So how often do you actually have to change policy or set new policy? Is it often, or is it not, is it rare?
It's funny that you ask, in fact, in the fall, I believe it was the fall, it may have been the spring of last year, we contracted with the, with our association, so the School Committee Association of Massachusetts, we contracted with them to review all of our policies. We want to make sure they match with the state, we want to make sure that they, that they are correct with our, that everything is kind of, if we mention a policy one place, we mention another place, that they all align. And so, we've been, I know that Vedna and I think, I think Dr. Sorenson are on that committee right now, and they're going through that. But some years, and I think right before I joined, probably 12 years ago, they did a full revamp of all of the policies. But we probably get a policy once every couple of months, and a lot of them are triggered by something that might happen at the state level so that we can comply. But sometimes it's triggered by, you know, we just realized we're doing something, and it's, we haven't been actually doing it the way we said we were doing it, you know?
Right, right, okay. So it's not, it's not a hugely cumbersome thing, you have 25 policies every year?
No, and many times, the policies are very simple, and it's like, oh, we just need to make an adjustment on a, on a job title, or something like that. But some, very rarely are they, exactly.
Okay. Question number three. The school budget makes up a large portion of the town's overall budget, and priorities for spending are often dictated by the needs of buildings, upkeep and maintenance, collective bargaining outcomes, and mandates funded or not.
Yes.
What approach do you take to decide what gets approved and what needs to be cut?
Yeah, I know, that's such a hard question, and I think it's different every year. I mean, the more we look at where we are right now, so we, if we look at FY24 that we are going into for this coming year that we just had the budget approved, we have COVID funding in that right now, or federal, federal dollars associated with COVID. So we have those fundings that have really been able to help us. We haven't had a level-funded budget since FY20. So that's a long time, fiscal year 20, that's a long time when you think about it. And so, right now, we have had millions of dollars removed from this, the school budget over the last three years. And so, that's probably, we probably have a good $3 million that when we start to create FY25's budget, that we're already behind. And so, when we're looking at that, I know a big discussion, we have 77%, I believe, is all contracted mandated, you know, that, this money we have to spend within the budget. And the 23% of it this year, that's this year's budget for FY24, is kind of, basically we have a little wiggle room, but that isn't salaries, but...
So what does the 77% include? Oh, that's all, that's salaries?
Yeah, salaries, yeah, all of that is in that 77%, and 23% is the...
Is everything else?
Is everything else. And so, we...
So it's the everything else that you have to...
Yeah, and that number, I feel like, has been whittling down since I joined the committee, and although our budget continues to rise, and sometimes in some cases, our, our student numbers are going down, but when you look at the needs of some of our students, and the needs of technology, and there's just so many things that have changed in our society, we need to focus on mental health and all, mental health, school safety, obviously test scores, we need to make sure our students are ready to go into the job force, there are just so many competing, you're never going to hear someone be like, "Cut my budget, cut my budget, it's totally fine." But I think when we're looking at it, we've, we've got to take a good look at how can we can be creative, and I think that's where the Plymouth School System has been really, really successful. I mean, we started with the solar, other people weren't doing solar, and we did solar. We have opportunities for, we've partnered with consortiums, like with other districts, to purchase certain things, and maybe there's more that we can look at to do stuff like that. When we look at our transportation budget, I know I've been working with Representative Maritore for a number of years, every year we put in like a little budget amendment that would pay for the Plymouth Public Schools' transportation, because in so many ways, we are the largest school by, the largest by miles in the whole state of Massachusetts. Even some regional school districts, we are bigger than. And so, they get their transportation paid for, but we're bigger, but we're not regional, so we don't.
So is this, is this an unfunded mandate? I mean, do you have to...
I mean, we have to, we have to, over a certain mileage...
But you get no money at all from the state?
There's no money that comes from the state for us to, we, and we have to, we're also mandated to pay for charter schools. And so, we pay for their charter schools.
Transportation?
Transportation as well, which we have a couple of pulling on that. And so, there's, and the increase, and we're about to go out to bid, I believe, again, which was, means our transportation numbers will probably increase, but we've been really creative, there's been purchases of some buses, and some vans, and things that the school can use, so that if they're, if it's a smaller field trip, like, we just approved a policy, right back to your other question, a couple of weeks ago, about using this beautiful new bus that we just got, I can't remember how many passengers it is, but we're able to use that, and that's going to cut down, like, faculty members and staff members who are willing to do it can drive it, which will cut down on the expenses of buses. So we've just been really creative and really lucky with all the school business officers we've had in the time I've been there, that they've really been like, okay, how can we meet the needs of our students and think creatively through this? Because I think cutting is really hard, there's no way to say, we can just cut this program and that program, and we have needs for our students, but we're also looking at ways to partner, like, I'm also the chair of Pilgrimage Collaborative, which is, Plymouth is a member of, and we can send some of our students out to them who maybe the district doesn't have a program that suits, so maybe their needs are higher than we're able to do within districts. Because we've built a lot of programming into the district, which has really helped to cut some of our, you know, out-of-district placements and things like that over the years. And so, being able to be members of PAC, we actually do get discount in sending our students there, we, at the end of the year, get a, sometimes money back because of the money that, like, PAC can only keep so much money, and so that's kind of how it works. And so, we're just, I think, being really creative. I think cutting is hard, I'd hate, I mean, we want to make sure that anything we cut, and this is something that Dr. Campbell says all the time, and I couldn't agree with more, it's as far away from the students as possible. We don't want any impact on their students' education and the students' experience, we need to think about what's over here that the students won't notice if we have to do those cuts.
So let me ask you something about, because there's so many schools in Plymouth, the buildings upkeep and maintenance must be a huge item.
Yeah.
And sometimes things happen that you didn't plan for. So how does that affect the budgetary process? What do you do?
Yeah, I know, that's actually, it's a great example, South Elementary School has a, they're on a well, and so, I think it was last spring, we had a bunch of issues with the well, we need to bring in a water tank, we need to fix the well itself, and the school was able to do that with being creative with funds. You know, that's when Christina was like, "Okay, where do I move and how do I work my budget?" But yeah, keeping our, schools are, I mean, we have schools that are over 100 years old, a lot of our schools are coming up, are 50 or more years old, and so, it's really that time we need to think about how do we make sure we have equity across, you know, we're right now in the discussion of, we're not just, we just applied to get approval from MSBA for, to be able to get funding for both, for potentially, an evaluation and funding for both Hedge and Cold Springs, to look at their campuses, how we might be able to either renovate...
Those elementary schools?
Yes, sorry, elementary schools, and see if they can be renovated, or is there something that we can do with the school building project? Is there a combining of the two? But the one thing to remember, and I know that, like, Hedge is such an important thing to Plymouth, and such an important thing to our North Plymouth community, that no matter what happens, I think a big piece of that conversation with Hedge has to be, how do we continue to use that as a community space and not give it, not sell it, as so much has been sold to become condos in the town of Plymouth? I know we've talked about a family resource center and a variety of ways to use that beautiful building, but to be able to make sure that we have equity across the district, because some of these students are having breakouts that are being done in, like, in the hallway, when they should be in their own spaces because of the limited space at Hedge, and so...
That makes sense. And my final question on budgeting is collective bargaining, and obviously, like you said, 73, I think you said, 77%?
77, I believe, that's as close as I can remember.
That sounds about right. So have you had experience doing that?
So I've never been on the Collective Bargaining Committee for a few years, I was actually a member of the MTA through APA in another position that I held, and only eight months ago, like, left the MTA, so it wasn't really a...
MTA is Mass Teachers Association? A lot of people that might be watching this don't know what all these alphabets mean.
Sorry, I know, education is like alphabets, too. It really is. But yeah, so I haven't had that.
So how do you, the last question on this is keeping teachers?
Yeah, it's so important.
Because obviously, you have to pay them, you have to give them benefits.
Yep, I know.
Are you seeing, or do you see issues down the road with retaining them or even getting new teachers?
I mean, I think we see that now, and I mean, it's not just Plymouth, it's everywhere. I mean, obviously, when you look at surrounding areas, Plymouth does pay less than a lot of districts, but we have benefits that outweigh it. But how do you get to that new teacher who is under 26 and doesn't care about your benefits because they're, they're on their parents' health insurance is a big question. How do you, how do we make, how do we make teachers feel that they are respected, and that they are valued, and that we, and they know they care, we all care about them, because without teachers, without any of our staff, I mean, there's so many sports staff, we have Paris, we have all these people that we need to, to make them know how important they are. I mean, we all have teachers in our lives, like, we wouldn't be who we are without them. I mean, I could list them off here, and so many of, so many of the ones, I mean, all of them really, are from the Plymouth Schools for me, you know, before college, and they really shaped the person that I became, and so it's so important that we're looking at, and we've made some strides, like, I probably, I don't know, five or six years ago, I did a big push for our, increasing the pay for our substitute teachers, because we were paying them far below what they were supposed to be paid. Took a few years, but they were up again. And so, it's looking at ways that we can, you know, be appreciative, and, but also, I mean, we have to understand our budgets are really tight, and as much as, but we also have to remember that these are members of our community. They're, when they're asking for raises, they're asking for raises because they want their kids to be in soccer, they want, they want to be involved as community members if they don't have kids. There's, just, they want to have a quality of life. And so, I think anyone who is, says like, "Oh, they have to, why would they want to raise," or "Can't they understand we're in budget?" We all have our own budget, we all have our own lives that we want to lead, and so we have to be really careful with how we do that.
All right, thank you. Here's question number four. There are many pressures on school committee members in general, not just in Plymouth, that have to do with DEI within the schools, parental input, curriculum adjustment, state directives, and ongoing societal changes. All of that, along with the heightened need for security in all of our schools, leaves the volunteer job of a school committee member very, very full. How will you best learn and keep up with the continually changing roster of information? Well, you, you don't need to learn it because you're already on it, but how do you keep up with it?
Oh my God, I think it's, it can be a full-time job, you know, it really can be sometimes, but I think we're really lucky, if, like I said before, in one of my, answer my questions, if I have a question, I know I can go to Dr. White, or I can go to Dr. Campbell, or I can go to any of our curriculum coordinators, Dr. Powers, like, and ask them about the curriculum. I can, we, with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, they have a wonderful information that we get mailed and emailed, there's a daily briefing that is put out about school news, and so, you know, you do as best as you can to keep up with all the changing pieces, and relying, I think, is really important, like, with school safety, we rely on the Plymouth Police Department, the Fire Department, any, to make sure that we're making those right decisions and those right choices. I think Plymouth did, we did really exciting thing last spring when we were able to hire our first DEI coordinator, because in order to, you know, and I think a big piece that we need to remember, the B, the belonging is for all, because we want everyone to feel that they belong in this, in our district. And so, that is a, is a really great step forward to help our students make sure that they're ready to enter the world. I mean, there's so many opportunities, Plymouth is a microcosm, obviously, of the world, but there, there's so many, if someone leaves and goes to another state, I mean, when I went to school in Virginia, like, it's a different, you just need to be ready and prepared and have those skills, like I said, what does a student, what do we want a student to look like when they graduate? We want them to be ready and prepared for the world. They could be an A-plus student, and they could be just got by, it doesn't matter, we just want them to be, find the fulfillment in their lives.
Right. So getting back to the things, no, that's okay, to the things that, as a school committee member, do you get, do you have parents calling you and saying, "I don't like this, I do like this, I want you to..." So how do you, how do you, because if it's, maybe it's one parent, maybe it's 10 parents, but there's thousands of parents. So how do you, how do you handle that?
Yeah, I mean, you just have to kind of, you listen, I think the most important thing is to let people talk it out, or email them, you know, people call you, people text you, people email, people direct message you on all the social media platforms.
They stop you in the supermarket?
They stop you in the supermarket, yes, yes, that is definitely a place to get stuff, you know, and, or for some of, some of my members who have, like, children in the soccer field, and, and so, it's, you, I think a big piece is you just have to weigh it, you know, you have to see how many people, you have to talk to people you know, because there are people who are going to come to you because they know you. And so, any little thing, or any big thing, whatever there's, what's percolating, they're going to be like, "What do you think about this? Tell me about this." But then there are other people who don't know members, and so I think that's important, and I'm always trying to say that, I will have a conversation with anybody, I will talk about anything, and, but you gotta, we have to balance what's good for the district and what's good for the budget, I mean, we just talked about that, what's, and what's good for our children, and making sure whatever we're doing is developmentally appropriate. Because I know a lot of that whole discussion of parental choice and parental, or input, I think, is, is making sure that we are, we're listening, but we're also making sure that our students are ready to go into the world. I mean, so many people, DEI, books, all the things that we expose our students to, it's crucial because, you know, there's the book, book issues that are happening across the country, or topics of health and wellness, and all those are popping up across the country. It's important that we remember that we need to teach our students for the world out there. Like, they say, books are what, mirrors and windows. So mirror, books allow us to see into ourselves and understand who we are, and they allow us to see into other worlds, and other people, and get to understand them. We just want to make sure our students, I think, are ready to understand who they are, because they're doing that search within themselves, and giving them that developmentally appropriate information, so they understand who little Johnny is, and who little Sarah is, you know, that they know who they are, and if they have questions, that they are able to understand that her, their feelings are legitimate, or, and they have mental health issues, that we can be able to get them help there, you know, so there's so many things.
So you brought up the book issue that's happening across the country. So have you had any, any issues with, with parents that say, you know, "We really don't think this book should be utilized," and, has it happened, or have you talked about, if it does happen, how you deal with it?
We've had some public comment about it, I haven't had anybody reach out to me directly about X book shouldn't be in the school system, but outside of our public comment piece. So, what was asked by your question?
Okay, no, that, no, that is, now, one other thing I wanted to...
Oh, how we would deal with it. I think it's, again, appropriate to remember the rules and, or the roles of a school committee member, that, you know, were set out by the Education Reform Act of, I think, 1993. You know, we hire and fire the superintendent, we evaluate, make sure the district's moving in the right way, we policies, all of those pieces. School committee members, and I believe it was a directive in the 90s, that school committee members aren't responsible for day-to-day activities within the school.
But are you, do you have to approve curriculum?
We know about curriculum and direction of the school, but we're not day-to-day in the fact that, you know, if it's a book that people have questions about, we can definitely talk about and discuss it, but it doesn't fall under our...
Okay, got it.
Technically, our purview. I mean, we could, but when you look at the actual guidelines of what we're supposed to advocate, and we can advocate to the superintendent, we can advocate, but...
This is what we say, okay.
It's not like, "I don't want Little House on the Prairie in my school," not that we would, that's a controversial topic. I don't know, it was the only thing I could think of.
Everything's fair game these days. Societal changes, for example, AI.
Yeah.
Now, that's a societal change that all schools have to figure out. What are we going to do with it? Have you had that conversation at all, or is that, will that be in your purview to talk about that?
We really haven't had that conversation too much at the school committee level, I know in my day job, but we've talked about what ChatGPT does to college, what does that do to an essay that you write, how do you make sure a student has written it, how do you lean into it? How do you, like, because there's no way we can get away from it at this point, you know, it's gone so far, but can you lean into it and have a student write a G, write in the topic ChatGPT and have that be their first draft?
So just, if anyone doesn't know, ChatGPT is a, it's a program, really, where you can tell it, you want, "Write me a term paper about this subject," and it will write the term paper about the subject. And it's, it's very well-written, and it's, it's, it's hard to kind of figure out, did the student write this, or did somebody else write this? So that whole, and that's in every aspect of our society, that's, that's going to play a role.
Yeah, which is, oh, sorry.
No, I'm assuming it's going to happen...
Oh, I'm sure, I mean, which is why we are teaching our students to think and to learn, and there's, like, in our science curriculum, there's a new, I'm not going to remember the name of it, but it's a, more of like an observation, and they're teaching them how to view the world around them and take in the world around them, because we're never going to not have, you know, I don't have my phone, but we're never not going to have that phone with us, we're never not going to have, so how do we teach them to use the technology at their fingertips? So that, I mean, goes into the AI, goes into the ChatGPT, but like, it doesn't, I don't think that anybody has solved that problem, I think you get like, some sort of medal if you can...
It's kind of a new problem, too, it's a new problem. Okay, I'll link on to my fifth question. If a friend of yours was considering moving to Plymouth and asked you for your honest assessment of its K-12 system, what would you highlight as the positives and point out as the areas that need improvement?
It's a great question, I mean, I think that Plymouth School System has such a great, I think what makes us, and we've been doing these, I can't remember the name of the surveys, but the school climate kind of surveys, and the students have been taking them, and it's, "Do you feel safe? Do you have a staff member that you're close to? Do you have at least one person, yeah, do you have at least one person in this building that you can go to for help?" And I think when you look at the surveys that all of our, that we've seen presented to us, you see that most of our students have at least one person that they can go to for help. And I think, or they can, they feel a connection to. And I think that is so important about our district. We need all of our students to have somebody, a teacher, a staff member, anybody that they um, can go to and they can ask for, for help. Um, that they can, they feel as a resource. And so I think that's really important. Um, because we want our students to belong. We want our students to feel that regardless of where they come from, what their strengths are, uh, what their weaknesses are and who they are, that they belong there and they have a connection. So I think that's really important. I mean, as I mentioned before, we have so many amazing things that our students do all the time. Uh, so many, our arts program is just phenomenal. I, I mean, if you haven't been to one of the Mamma Mias this weekend, or it won't be when this airs, but hopefully people have seen it. But it's, the student talent is just phenomenal in a variety of ways. And that's what I think the Plymouth Schools does really well. It can tap in and help students find their passion. Is it sports? Is it theater? Is it um, you know, is it a vocational education? What, what is it?
Yep.
Um, and so I think those are a really great thing, at, at all levels. We have robotics programs. We have all these programs and they start when the kids are really young, uh, to get them involved into, uh, part of the community, to find their passion. And so I think those Plymouth Public Schools does a really good job of helping students find themselves and find their passion while they're going through it. What can we improve on? I mean, and we have, I think we also do a really great job with school safety. I, I don't think I answered that in your last question. Uh, but we, we all, we have meetings monthly to make sure that we are
School safety?
Yes, that we're on point there, um, with our relationships across the community. Uh, and then we also have, um, what do we need to work on? I think we can always work on getting better test scores all around. I mean, no, no district is ever gonna say, we're good, we're done. Uh, but, but overall, we have so many students who are, we have an inclusive AP program so that um, students can uh, I mean, I can't, I think it's like a hundred plus students that are in itself and north individually in the AP classes.
An AP is
Advanced Placement. So the students can take the class and if they pass the test at the end of the year, they hopefully, I think it's with a three or above, they get credit
For college?
For college. And so hopefully a money saving.
Yep, yep.
Um, so I think that, you know, no one will ever say, oh, we're, we're doing fine.
Yeah.
We can always do better there. Uh, we have phenomenal educators and we have phenomenal community support. I think that's really what is important to mention too. Coming into Plymouth, Plymouth supports our education. We have um,
You mean the town?
The town of Plymouth. I mean, we have been really lucky. We have two new high schools uh, in the last decade. And so we, we have community support. When we need something, like a few years ago, we, we had a, the budget itself wasn't fully funded and we had had money taken out of it and the town meeting members put it back in. Uh, we didn't, I don't believe, end up using that if I remember correctly. Uh, but we had that and that they support, support us. So I think if someone was moving into this community, they can know that education is in the forefront of the minds of our community. Cause they understand that without a well-educated uh, student body or without, or without a well-educated population, where, where is your community? You know, that you need to make sure that you're continually um, feeding the jobs you have. You're continuing to make sure that you have a, you know, you enjoy living where you live. Uh, so I think, I think we're really lucky as a community to have people who care about our students.
Okay. Excellent. So, um, now
Yes.
that camera is where you're gonna talk for the next few minutes. And you can talk about anything we didn't talk about. Anything you want to clarify, anything you want to bring up that, a subject that we didn't bring up.
Yeah.
Um, any statement you want to read? And then in the end, why should people vote for you?
Yeah, well, you know, I just wanted to thank PAC TV for having me today, uh, and all the work that you do to inform our community on all levels. Uh, but I just wanted to say that, you know, I was elected in twenty eleven for the first time and I will continue to work hard on behalf of the school system and bring the perspective of someone who went through the school system. And someone who really does listen and make the, to make the best decision for the district and brings a perspective of higher education, which I think is really important. And then also, since March twenty twenty, we've gone through a number of changes. Uh, and, and so we have a lot that we need to, to do moving forward. We have to think about diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging because it encompasses so much within our, our, our district. Through this, we can continue to do the work to create an environment in where all of our students thrive. Our student body continues to evolve and so must the school, the school system. Uh, doing all that we can to ensure our students have the resources they need, they feel safe when they're at school. And then the budget, we talked about earlier. I mean, without the, without the stimulus we've had the last few years, it, it's gonna be really difficult, but we have to think creatively for FY twenty-five. Um, and then also, we've talked about our buildings. We need to make sure that we are maintaining our buildings and looking in the long term and the short term at what needs to be done. And obviously keeping school safety in the forefront of everything we do, um, within the district. And I mean, I could go on and on about so many topics, but we only have two minutes. And I just look forward to working on behalf of all of Plymouth and to improve and continue to move our quality of education further. I graduated from Plymouth South High School in two thousand and two. After that, I graduated from Sweetbrow College and I hold two master's degrees in public administration and political science. And I've worked in higher education for over sixteen years now. And to find out more about me, the things I haven't mentioned today, you can go to my Facebook page, Michelle Badger for School Committee, or send me an email at Michelle L. Badger at gmail dot com. I'm always open for a conversation. And again, my name is Michelle Badger. And I am running for reelection to the Plymouth School Committee. And I respectfully ask for your vote to continue the important work that I've been doing for the last twelve years on May twentieth.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you very much for participating in this interview and we wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, please visit our website, PACTV.org for replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's on-demand and streaming service, PAC TV Prime. Please make your choices heard by voting in the town election on Saturday, May twentieth. Thank you and good day.